The town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, it's one minute after seven. It looks like everybody is here that's expected to participate. So I will call the meeting to order. Today is Monday, December 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM. It's our regular Plainville Town Council meeting. We'll start working through our agenda. We do not have any presentations this evening, but we do have a public hearing and at this point I will ask our assistant town manager, Matt Dasko, to read the notice of the public hearing, please, Matt.
Good evening. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, December 21st, 2020 in the municipal center to consider, one, an additional appropriation of $490,000 to the Capital Project Fund, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, the 17th day of December, 2020.
Thank you, Matt. Robert, what I would ask for you to do is give a brief description so those that may be listening understand why we're having a public hearing regarding this appropriation, please.
Yes. The fiscal year 21 budget, which is the current year's budget, included a capital improvement budget, included a source of revenue of $980,000 from the unassigned fund balance. In order to move money from the unassigned fund balance to the capital improvement budget, this has to be formally appropriated by the town council. Where town staff is proposing that we do this in two steps, taking half of it to appropriate now and half of it to appropriate towards the end of the fiscal year or later on in the fiscal year. The process for that appropriation requires a public hearing and after the public hearing, the council would consider action, which is what we have scheduled for the, towards further back in the meeting. So that's their purpose for tonight's public hearing, is to answer any questions with respect to this appropriation, which was planned for, discussed and part of the budget when it was passed last spring.
Okay, Robert, thank you for that. I don't know if any of the council members have any questions or anything they'd like to add to this. No? Looking at heads. Okay. If not, I will ask if we do have any folks on the call that might be interested in speaking to the public hearing. Kevin, do you have anybody on the call at this moment?
There's one phone number. It ends in 1-9-4-9. I'm going to allow you to talk, please. Speak when available. Hello? Would you like to speak in the public comment? I'm not getting a response at this point.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll take it that that won't happen. Hearing, no comments regarding our public hearing. At this point in time, I will close the public hearing and I will move on to the next item on our agenda, item number three, minutes of our previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair. Motion to approve the minutes of December 7th, 2020, regular meeting.
Madam Chair, second motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any, is there any discussion on the minutes? Any changes that you would like to have made at this point in time? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. Item number four, announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make tonight?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Rosemary.
I attended the December meetings of both the Library Board of Trustees and the Conservation Commission. In terms of a library, Director Thomason reporting of libraries obviously running, up and running. It's open. Circulation's holding its own. Obviously, not much of a surprise. The digital titles actually are circulating at a higher level than a year ago. And Conservation Commission already discussing some projects they're looking at for spring in terms of cleanup and other endeavors. That's it.
Okay, Rosemary, thanks so much for that. Does anybody else have anything to report? I would just like to make a mention of the fact that on December 11th, the Chamber of Commerce sponsored a Santa drive-by at Norton Park. As in the past, the Chamber sponsored a gathering at our firehouse to meet Santa and turn on the holiday lights in town. However, due to COVID concerns, that did not happen, but they wanted to do something a little bit for the families and the children in town and they came up with an idea of a little parade through Norton Park so that the families could come by. They'd have, we were advising that folks stay in their car and it was a little parade. There were about seven vehicles involved. Santa was there. Mrs. Claus was there. There was a fire truck was there. Everybody did a great job decorating their vehicles. There were lights and all kinds of things happening. And I have to tell you, I volunteered to drive Mrs. Claus in my convertible and there was an amazing turnout for this event. There was an estimated over 500 cars there. There were lots of families and they were flashing their lights and blowing the horns and the children had a great time and I can't tell you how much fun that was. And I think the Chamber is going to next year try to expand on that idea. But in lieu of the fact that we couldn't have our usual gathering at the firehouse, this came in as a very nice second and everybody seemed to be having a lot of fun. And it was, I was overwhelmed by the number of cars. I couldn't believe it. When we drove into Norton Park, the number of cars that were there and the families that gathered. So I just want to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce and the volunteers that participated in it. It was again, a wonderful holiday event and it was safe and everybody seemed to have a really good time. So we'll see what they come up with next year. I'm sure it'll be just as fabulous, if not better. All right, if there are no other reports for this evening, we'll move into the next portion of our meeting. Appointments and resignations. We have one resignation. If we can have that made, please.
Madam Chair. Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Michael Goulet from the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say that I had the honor of working on the wetlands for four years when Michael Goulet served as chair and he did such a phenomenal job. I learned a lot from him and I know everybody else that has had the honor to work for him or under him for the past 20 years that he's been on that board has learned a lot from him and for the better. So I thank him for all of his years.
Great. Thank you for that. And Robert, could we send a letter of appreciation to Mr. Goulet for his many years of service and dedication to that commission? That's a particularly important one and we're certainly grateful for all his years of service.
Yes, we will do that, for sure.
Thank you. Do we have any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions tonight?
Madam Chair.
Rosemary.
Yes. Oh, we have to vote. Okay.
All these nice things we didn't vote. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Rosemary, now is your turn.
Okay. I make motion to reappoint Elizabeth Cresswell, Marilyn Pettit, and Charlotte Politis to the Committee on Aging.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are there any other appointments or reappointments this evening?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Nazo.
Motion to appoint Adrian Parides as Deputy Chief of the Fire Department effective January 4th, 2021 for a two-year term.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any other appointments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Nazo. I'll just let you carry through, all right?
We have two more, yes.
Keep the floor. Thank you.
Motion to appoint Kurt Plord as First Assistant Chief of the Fire Department effective January 4th, 2021 for a two-year term.
Second.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead.
Motion to appoint David Massey as Second Assistant Chief of the Fire Department effective January 4th, 2021 for a one-year term.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other appointments this evening?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Rocco.
Like to make a motion to reappoint Mark Chase and Joseph Copacki Jr. as regular members of economic development for the terms ended November 9th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any others?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Nancy Ann, reappoint Nancy Ann Artuno as a regular member to economic development for a four-year term ended November 9th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any others?
Madam Chair.
Rock.
Motion to reappoint Val Dumay as a regular member of the Economic Development Agency for a five-year term ended November 9th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any others?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Last one, last one. Motion to reappoint Timothy Maynard and Mark Romanov as alternate members of economic development for the two-year term ended August 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Second.
Great. I have a motion in two seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any other appointments or reappointments tonight? Hey, thank you all for taking care of all those items of business for us. Board of Education liaison, I don't think we have a report from the Board of Ed, but Superintendent LaPage is going to speak to us in a little while, so he'll fill us in. Reporter, the town attorney, Attorney Mastriani, hello?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and happy holidays to everybody. I do not have a report for tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Robert, we're down to your portion of the meeting. Reporter, the town manager, and I will turn this over to you.
Robert, you're muted.
Sorry, Kevin, if you could put the slides up for the middle school discussion. Steve LaPage, Superintendent of Schools, is participating in this evening's meeting to discuss the potential renovation of the middle school. He will discuss the need for the project, a potential timeline, and the next steps for moving forward with the project. So with your permission, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Steve LaPage.
Okay. Hi, Steve.
Hi, Kathy. Hello, everyone. Thanks, Robert. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you briefly tonight about the MSP renovate like new project proposal. We have come up on that timeline, so I'll just give you a basic justification and then the timeline and the next steps would be required if the town council wishes to pursue this project, which, you know, we're hoping that you will. I'll share some of those details at this time. If we could go to the next slide, Kevin. So this is just a slide showing the other renovations that have happened across the town. As you know, renovation projects are very favorable when it comes down, comes to, you know, significantly saving local property tax, you know, with the cost that is, you know, covered in a large part, over 60% for the project so far by the state. Instead of doing different repairs that need to be done and making the schools new and beautiful and all the things we want them to be for our children and the adults who work there and the families who enjoy the schools as part of the community. They've been handled really well through the town, the Capital Project Building Committees over the past 15 or so years. So Linden was the least recent, back in 2006, and then the PHS in 2008, just before I came to town. So I just missed that whole exciting adventure and then Wheeler was 2020, as you know, and they did a great job with each of these projects. And we're at that point now, or coming up on the point, where we should begin preparing, very soon preparing for the first steps of the project. For the middle school, we have come up on the 30-year mark will officially be April of 2022, which is not far around the corner. There are some steps that have to be taken in order to meet the timeline for the whole process, which includes a referendum. If you could go to the next slide, Kevin. This slide just gives you some of the justifications and I'll show some of the dollars and cents on an upcoming slide. And this is just a quick overview, but there are many other justifications, but deferring millions of dollars over the years, not putting the, not putting major projects into the capital capital improvement budget, putting those down off down, you know, pushing whatever we could down the road, especially the larger things like the roof and the chillers and electrical distribution and some other, you know, safety, safety things we want to take care of. All the, all the other buildings have the secure N U A vestibles that take you directly into, you know, through a lock door into the office and you're, you know. So at this time, we have the security cameras and an office professional who, you know, reviews who's coming to the buildings, but the secure vestibule like was done over at the high school over the summer and they did a great job. You know, thanks to having that in our capital improvement budget for the current year. That's been done. So now the last school is the middle school. We are fortunate to have an SRO at the middle school now, which does help with security, but of course, the SRO isn't stationed at the front doors at all times. They have a much different role and doing a great job so far. So as I had shown on the other slide, you know, all the other schools have been done within the last 14 or 15 years. The technology infrastructure, you know, Kevin's always working to update and upgrade everything to work smoothly and efficiently, as you know, is so important always, but especially now with going, you know, between hybrid and remote learning at times and just in our classrooms, all the technology is being well-used. Some of the classroom spaces are, you know, outdated a bit, needed to be updated and upgraded, the labs to be more with the times and then just some potential for reconfiguring certain areas to make them more usable. The special ed service delivery areas are really small and pretty crowded at times. So just, you know, just reconfiguring the building as you do with any renovation, looking at how it's used currently compared to how it was used 30 years ago when it was, when it was built or renovated. Lockers are in pretty bad need of repair and also make them, you know, more usable. They're very narrow, unlike the high school lockers that are, you know, much wider, can fit a backpack and other things you need. Risk of, at this time, the state reimbursement is still, you know, is still a strong program and it's still, you know, a good rate, depending where we come in. But, you know, there's always that risk of, you know, when things, if things get worse at the state level, those monies maybe not being available for the projects, you know. I can't predict that, but it's always a potential risk. And then just working on traffic flow, you know, if you've been at the middle school at the morning rush or the afternoon rush, it gets a bit chaotic. So there's, you know, through the grounds renovation as well, we would look at a better traffic flow pattern. And also the, with the potential use of recent upgrades that have been done in equipment, you know, that failed, that was replaced, that could be used to offset the renovation needs for the building and that helps to decrease the cost. If you go to the next slide, Kevin, that's just some of the justifications. So on the left are the middle school capital improvement projects that have been completed that needed to be done and couldn't be waited on or were decided not to be waited on for various reasons, but the fire alarm system, the auditorium seating, you know, we had seats failing and breaking and, and, you know, risking, risking injuries and whatnot. So those were done. Converting a tennis court into a very used, well-used parking lot now. That was a great move back in 1718. Upgrading the auditorium lighting and then the boiler replacement was critical. And, you know, that would be something that could be included as a kind of an offset to the project. On the right side, you'll see a list of some of the bigger items that have been kept out of the budget that are needs or soon to be needs. You know, the roof is failing in many places. There's buckets and, you know, catching rainwater and leaking and it's repaired, you know, pretty regularly, but it's, the roof is failing quite often. The HVAC, I won't go through each of these, but the first three are, you know, big ticket items, so, you know, close to three and a half million dollars. They add up to over $6 million. And there's more. These are just some of the bigger ones that need to be, need to be, you know, included either in future capital improvement projects if we decide, you know, if the town decides not to go forward between the town council's, you know, approval of going forward and then the referendum. If it's not in a capital, it's not in a renovation like new project, that we'd have to, we'd have to account for these, you know, failing items through the regular capital improvement budget process. Kevin, could you go to the next page? So this is just a picture of the certificate of occupancy. There was some initial discussion about what's the kickoff date for when we are eligible and, you know, we've been able to determine that it's 30 years from the actual approval for occupancy, which was April of 1992. So we're, it's coming up fairly quickly and there's, there are steps that need to happen in the, you know, before we could begin the process or to get the process started, I should say. So that's just a record of that. Next one, Kevin. These are just some of the key dates. There's more in between these dates, but the big ones are really, you know, pulling together the building committee to select an architect, an architectural firm to do the study, which is a critical piece that has to be done first. So the building project being brought together, select an architect, the study being completed, starting in, you know, July of this summer through, through next January, including, you know, specifications, conceptual design and cost analysis and then getting approval to proceed from the town council with support of the Board of Ed as well. You know, a year from February and then the project referendum, it would need to go to referendum in May of next year. And then, you know, as you can see, the submitting grant application, if it passes referendum and the following steps, you know, that are here for you to look at. And there's more, of course, between all these kind of bigger timeline items. Kevin? This is just, you know, as Representative Pettit could probably recite this, of course, but the legislative approval process for getting a, you know, school construction grant and review. I won't read it to you, but this is just kind of the legal process that allows for us to have these renovations and supports doing so. Next page, Kevin. So the next steps are just, I shared this with the Board of Education. I know Chairman Paklisi was at the Board of Education meeting. I appreciate that. And sharing it with you here for approval to proceed with the first steps. You know, it's not an approval of the, of the actual renovate like new project, but of, you know, taking the first steps. I had spoken with Robert, Town Manager Lee, last, last spring, when, you know, we knew we had some realized savings and we were looking at some potential costs that were coming up. And then one of the things we talked about was, you know, a lot of that money comes back in a renovation, but the architect plans do have a cost to them. So we're hoping to, hopefully use some of the funding that was, you know, not utilized through the budget last year and start the process with the architect. But the first step would be to pull together the building, a building committee this spring in the near future to get them started on selecting an architect to begin for summer of 2021. And Kevin, I think the last slide, it's just questions and that's a real quick overview of, you know, the building project proposal and some justifications and timeline.
Steve, Dave, I have a question for you. What is the state reimbursement rate? I didn't quite get that.
Yeah, it depends on a number of factors, but the maximum, I believe, is 65.23%. I'd have to look at that, but I'm pretty sure that's the number, you know. So some of it comes down to the size of the building and the occupancy and there's a, there are a number of other factors that can impact that, but the maximum's about 65%.
Dave, the way, the way they handle that, it's, they call it 65% of what they call eligible costs. Not all costs associated with a building project are considered eligible and we get some guidance from both the school construction people and our architects at the time. Additionally, each year, the state legislature sets the, you know, the reimbursement rate for each of the communities. Plainville's reimbursement rate on annual basis has averaged somewhere around 65% reimbursement for eligible items for many years. We don't know if that percentage is going to continue going forward. We don't know if that, we will know the percentage. We will know the expected percentage. Once we go to referendum, we couldn't tell you today if the referendum is in, you know, in February of '22 or May of '22, it would be May of '22. We'll know what the, we'll know what the reimbursement rate is, but we won't be able to tell you that until we get closer to calendar year '22, so.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Steve, could, do you know the student population for the school?
Well, currently, it's about 533.
Is that wood choice as well?
Yes, that's what all the students at MSP and of course, some are in schools, some are fully remote by choice at this point, but the total student population is around 533. And it fluctuates somewhat, but it's been fairly static around that number for the last few years.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Superintendent LaPage about the proposed project? Okay, I think we're good, Robert, on that end. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin, could you put up the next slide dealing with Valley Water, if you would? Okay. Several weeks ago, Valley Water notified the town that they had filed an application to the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, otherwise known as PURA, for an increase in their water rates. Valley Water pointed out that the last time there was a rate increase was in 2010. If you could put up the next slide, Kevin, please. They're requesting an average rate increase of 35.73%, which would raise their revenues by $1.23 million. They also pointed out that the rate increase does not include any construction cost or operating cost associated with the new Woodford Avenue Water Softening Plant, which is scheduled to be built next year. An analysis of their application, and that's what we have up on the screen right now, shows that a residential customer, and this is in the green box, that the residential customer with a monthly water bill of $25, averages $25, would see an increase of 38.75% or $116.26 per year. There are two charges for residential rate and that's on the left side. One is the size of the pipe that you have coming into your house. Most residential properties have 5/8 inch pipe, water pipe supply line. And then below is the actual rate based on usage. So you got a fixed fee based on the, having the pipe and that's based on pipe size and then you, then you add how much water you use to it and that's where you get your bill. For a customer averaging $35 per month, they would see an increase of 36.18% or $151.96 a year. And then finally, a residential customer with a monthly bill of $50 would see an increase of 34.25% or $205.51 per year. In addition to the increase in the residential rates, there will also be significant increases to the commercial and industrial rates as well. And it's usually the commercial and industrial rates that the larger pipes that are, that supply them with, with their water and that's why you see the different pipe sizes on the left side of the chart. These increases, while significant, will be less than the residential rates, at least on an average, as far as a percentage is concerned. Valley Water is also proposing a 24.52% increase for public fire protection services rate. If approved, then that's something that the town pays. If approved as requested, the town budget would see an increase of $168,196. And you see that in the yellow boxes on the right side. You see currently, the town is paying $685,000, almost $686,000 a year for fire protection services. For fire protection services to Valley Water. If approved, as proposed, as requested, that would rise to a hundred and fifty-four, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. The next step is for PURA to review the application and at some point conduct a public hearing. Information regarding the proposed rate increase can be found on the town website at W W dot Plainville C T dot com. As well as the PURA website at W W W dot portal dot C T dot gov forward slash PURA. P U R A. And that that reference will also be uh on on online on the town website, in case you didn't pick that up. The docket number for the application is twenty dash eleven dash fourteen. Uh my recommendation to the council is that the town become what's known as an intervenor in this rate case, which uh allows us to. Have access to uh information as as it goes back and forth be between PURA and the uh and the applicant, in this case being Valley Water. And uh I I plan to uh set up a meeting with Valley Water uh Valley Water staff. With Dr. Pettit, a rep- state representative, Kathy Pagliisi and myself to get further details as to. Uh the ret- the rationale and the reasoning for the uh for the rate increase uh and and hope to be able to um. You know, disseminate that information as well as we go forward. We hope to have that meeting over the next several weeks, so. Opened any questions or comments with regards to the rate increase. I think it's important that people know what's being proposed. And uh it's it's incumbent upon us, the town, to keep our citizens aware of that. And provide them the opportunity to provide input to PURA before they make a decision on this rate case.
Robert, I just have a quick question um regarding, and we'll probably get more information from uh Valley Water as we get into a. Meeting in the future, but aren't these rate requests typically based on some capital improvements that have already occurred? And now the water company is coming back to PURA in order to replenish their investment in the system? Is that typically how it works?
I don't believe so. I I think it's more based upon what they plan to do going forward. With some of the replacement of their of their of their pipes, their their plans going forward. Uh I don't, it's a it's a reimbursement going backwards. And that and that's some of the information we have to learn from them and that's, I think that's one of the reasons why they pointed out that the. The rate increase does not include the proposed, you know, improvements to the to the water softening equipment. They may not just have that information available to them right now, but. I I think it's mostly more looking forward than looking backwards.
Okay, well, I guess we'll learn more about that once we sit down and speak with them.
Yes.
Thank you.
There's no other uh questions or comments. I'll move on to the next item, which is the self-insurance health fund. Two years ago, the town joined the Connecticut State Partnership Plan to provide health insurance benefits to town and Board of Education employees. Before that, the town self-insured for these health benefits. The self-insurance program was in place for approximately twenty years. For the great majority of those years, the town saved significant monies compared to the average of the average increases of a fully insured rate during the same time period. However, in the last several years of the self-insurance program, the claims significantly exceeded the allocated contributions. The self-insurance fund currently has a deficit of two point three-seven million dollars. To eliminate this deficit, town staff is recommending that the town council adopt a plan to utilize savings. And that's what you see on the screen right now is the is our um projection for the debt service. Plan or the debt service line item going forward and that's uh uh under, you know, going forward from the current fiscal year. To fiscal year twenty-six and that's something you mount. The first column says four million, four hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. That's currently what we budget for debt service. And what we're proposing and we is to continue uh keeping that at the same same level, you know, going forward and that's something that we've 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 done for probably the last five or six years. And you can see in the second column that the debt service is going to decrease uh over time. Uh going forward as as debt drops off that we've completely, you know, that we've that we've paid off. So to eliminate the deficit, town staff is recommending that the town council adopt a plan to utilize the savings in the debt service plan. During the next four years, and you can see that in the green column, the running balance, the debt service line item will will have a savings of over three million dollars. This amount would eliminate the deficit in the self-insurance fund over the next four years. But this path is taken, instead of having the savings accrue to the debt management fund, the savings would accrue to the general fund instead. When that occurred, the town council would then annually authorize an appropriation to the self-insurance health fund to eliminate the deficit. But if the town council is supportive of this approach, town staff will prepare a policy statement to be considered at a future meeting. The other option is to is to take our current unassigned fund balance. And begin appropriating that to to the health uh insurance fund deficit. Uh but we think we'd we'd be better to do it over time. It does not impact uh directly uh the the taxpayers. Uh you know, the 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 mill rate uh and uh I think would be a a a more prudent approach to take. Rather than take it out of the current unassigned fund balance, which, you know, at this point in time. So I answer, try to answer any questions you might have on this particular issue of.
Robert, I have a question. This is Kathy. Is there any, um are we confined by any time restraint? Particularly maybe from our auditors about taking care of this um. This deficit that we have from the health insurance fund. Do we have to accomplish this in a year or two years or five years or what? What is your thought on that?
Well, we're showing it. It is is in the audit uh that that what the what that balance is. And uh while there's no re requirement that it get. Paid off, it's being being carried, I believe, as as a li- as a liability against town right now. And as we plan to uh go out for bonding, our rating agencies take a look at the audit and when they see this particular. Liability sitting out there, you know, they ask questions about, okay, well, you know, this is, you know, this is something that's concerning to us. And, you know, what is your plan for taking care of this liability? And if we have a policy in place as being suggested. That and a plan for it to get paid back over time, that's generally viewed as something positive and 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 uh. You know, will not count against us or should not count against us. You know, as we as we, you know, go out to to get rated before we borrow, for example, to permanently bond. Road Bond Two or the remaining portion of the Wheeler Project. I know that uh Rob Buden's on on, you know, listening in and and I could uh ask him if he could uh, you know, maybe say a few words with regards to your question as well, Kathy, if that's okay.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rob.
Good evening, yeah.
Rob, we can't hear you. Speak up a little bit.
All right, is that any better?
Little better.
As Robert said, it's really the rating agencies that um look at this. The auditors do as well. And, you know, they question us every year. How is this going to be paid off? You know, we've now had, what, two years of of three years dealing with the state insurance plan, so. Really, the deficit should go away for something, you know, that we're we are no longer doing. In other words, the self-insurance itself uh with regards to medical. So, you know, a plan in place, whether it's over a two, three, four, five-year period, is a good thing for the auditors and the rating. And as long as we stick to it or at least continue to, you know, knock the deficit down. Um all of those items would be, you know, positive checks on the positive side of the ledger versus negative when it comes to our ratings. Um in our our interest rates that we pay in our debt as we go forward.
Rob, that was difficult to hear. Um not sure if anybody was able to get most of that, but uh.
All right. Is that better?
That's significantly better.
All right, yeah. Okay. All right, so I'll just reiterate quickly. As Robert said, um, you know, it's really the rating agencies that require us to be positive. We shouldn't have any. Deficits in any fund ever, per se, um in a in a perfect world scenario, but obviously that doesn't happen. Um so it's really the rating agencies and the auditors who request of us, you know, what what are we doing? What's our plan? How can we get rid of this negative? You know, and obviously a negative in any situation i- is not a good thing to have in your financial statement. When it comes to the rating agencies, um you know, there's positive uh pros and cons uh on side of the ledger. This negative and because it's a substantially large negative is definitely on the negative side of our our ledger. And it's a con against us and, you know, could impact our interest rates going forward. With the plan in place, um again, whether it's paid off over, you know, two, three, four, five years, as long as the plan is adhered to to a degree. The rating agencies and the auditors um like that and that negative check mark will become a positive going forward. You know, again, the the concern is that our rating, although right now very good, with the uncertain times, uh you know, in the economy and. You know, elsewhere around the world, you know, we're probably due to our size and our, you know, ability to pay, not going to get a rating increase, but we could certainly get a rating decrease. And, you know, these are one of the things that they would point to if there were to be a rating decrease. So again, a plan in place to get rid of the deficit would minimize that concept and pretty much, you know. At least uh our hope would be to maintain our current rating, which will be beneficial to us whenever we go out to bond again in the future.
And and you will see that under the uh the plan that's in front of you, that early next year. If all goes according to plan and these are pretty much fixed costs, that the council would be in position to do it, you know, uh an appropriation from the unassigned fund balance as a result of. Savings at a debt management fund or a debt management plan of a little bit over four hundred thousand dollars. You know, and in the following year, it'd be an additional, you know, almost, you know, almost nine hundred thousand dollars. So by the time it went out to bonding, we we would actually have taken. At least the first step in the plan if it if it, you know, if in fact the policy is adopted by the town council.
Robert, this is Kathy. One more quick question. So we are um, we're looking at some of the other debt that is going to come on board, specifically Wheeler. And tonight we talked about the middle school. So is the middle school going to be figured into this plan of our debt service or is that going to be coming on board after twenty-six?
Yeah, if you go, if you go, if you look at at the um at the chart, we're projecting that the middle school project would would come in in fiscal year twenty-five. And this would be after the uh the self, the the deficit in the self-insurance fund is is fully paid off. So right now, if the referendum happens in fiscal year twenty-two, wouldn't go out to bid probably till sometime in twenty-three. Would probably take a year and a half, two years for us to build it. The impact of the middle school project, the earliest would be fiscal year twenty-five and it may actually get pushed out the fiscal year twenty-six. So under this plan, we did, I did uh factor in the middle school project at a debt cost of twenty million dollars and that's to be determined. But that the earliest that that would come on, the town into the debt service would be fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions for Robert regarding this?
Okay. Rosemary, did you want to say something? Nope.
No.
Okay, then um we'll bring back our a relatively, you know, short, one-page probably policy. And and having that policy adopted by the council and being able to show that to the rating agencies carries a lot of weight. It's it's like your fund balance policy as well. Not only is the policy important, but it's it's also important that you follow the policy. So it, you know, we'll make sure that, you know, as we go forward over the years at future town councils. If there's any changes in personnel and elected leaders that they're aware of these policies, especially when we get into the budget budget uh budget times, so. Uh next item I have is the Municipal Coronavirus Relief Fund Program. Uh the state has established a municipal coronavirus relief fund to reimburse towns for costs incurred as a result of the pandemic. These funds can be used to pay for the improvements made to municipal facilities to protect workers and visitors. Improvements to date have been made to the municipal center, library and senior center. Plainbill's allocation from the coronavirus relief fund is two hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and six cents. A separate relief fund has been established for education, building improvements and operating costs as well. There is an item in a new business that would authorize the town manager to execute all necessary documents to receive funding under this grant program. So we will get the funds uh through O P M and we just want to make sure that we have a an acknowledgement in place from the town council. That um that the town manager, myself, can sign any necessary documents to accept the grant. There's no question on this slide. I'm I I know that uh State Representative Bill Pettit was under a time constraint and uh. You know, maybe give him an opportunity now if he if he has anything that he wants to speak to and uh, you know, before can before completing the rest of my um. My report with your permission.
Yes, of course. Go ahead. Hi, Bill.
Kathy, than- thank you, Robert. Don't, well, I'll just I'll just say a few few quick things and. Uh repeat what I said, I think, before we went live that uh some of the downtown business people were very happy with uh with the the town's approach to clearing the. The snow, the the snow that gets piled up and prevents people from parking in front of their businesses. So they're very appreciative of the work that the Department of Public Works did. The 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 only couple of things I wanted to talk about were, again, today we have three days worth of data and a couple of the the good trends. We've trended that positivity rates for coronavirus down from eight, nine percent down to five percent over the past three days. And over the past couple of weeks, we have, we peaked, we had gone from a low of about forty-five people hospitalized to twelve, thirteen hundred and the last couple of weeks, we've been in the eleven, twelve hundred range and over the past three days, we're down. There still continues to be significant deaths. There's ninety-five deaths related to Corona over the past three days, probably representing some of the spikes seen after the Thanksgiving holiday. There's concerns from public health officials that if people are not careful through the Christmas and New Year's holidays, we'll see a similar spike in in January. But again, the transit hospitalization is is has been very helpful. The the other good news was that, not so much from the state, but from the feds. And hopefully they've agreed on a nine-hundred-billion-dollar uh stimulus package, which will give six hundred dollars to uh individuals. And six hundred dollars to children, I believe it's a seventy-five thousand dollar individual income limit, a hundred and twenty-five thousand for for couples. Some people think that's uh enough and some people think that's far, far too little. Probably more importantly, there's going to be an additional three hundred dollars a week for unemployment insurance for at least eleven weeks and there's some uh some assistance. And and twenty-five billion dollars towards rental assistance, which is the big issue since we're. The de- federal deadline had been the end of December and the governor passed it out, put it out till uh February, so there's going to be. Of the eviction issues and hopefully more money so that uh landlords also have have some protection and are bearing bearing the brunt of this. Finally, uh restaurants and small businesses, we had lobbied the governor to come up with a fifty-million-dollar package specifically for restaurants and small businesses. He had started at twenty-five million and now has agreed to come up to thirty-five million. And it's going to actually end up being a grant program. There will not be applications. The Department of Economic Development is looking. With the Department of Revenue Service app, uh taxes, employment numbers, business done, they're aiming at small businesses and they're going to aim to give out. I think it's a, let me see if they published a a number yet, about two thousand businesses a grant that could range in from ten to thirty thousand dollars. There's not going to be an application. Period. They're they're going to be going to be selected based on statistics in 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 terms of their business from a peak peak goal on the number of people they they employ. Further information that can be seen on the D T C D website and the Connecticut Restaurant Association. Uh, further information that can be seen on the DTCD website and the Connecticut Restaurant Association website. The Connecticut Restaurant Association is running a uh, a uh webinar tomorrow to update uh people in the business about that. And that's at least a, a very positive thing. Besides that, uh, we're legislators, we're ready to go back into session January 6th. But right now they're talking about us still doing it remotely, which is going to be uh, I think a little bit painful for everybody and, and difficult. Some, some ways easier and some ways difficult for constituents. Many of these issues come up on a test by, they'll be able to do so from home. As opposed to traipsing up to the Capitol to do so, but it's obviously uh covered them that way. So we'll have to, we, we've done it with the EverSource hearings and some pure hearings this summer, police accountability bill and a few, few other legislative moves. We will see, but with that, uh, I, I can uh turn, turn it back to uh, to Kathy and, and Robert. Thank you.
Going to continue on number four, which is the coronavirus relief fund program. I'm going to ask Steve LaPage, I, I stated in the uh, you know, that the town was, was going to receive, you know, $261,000 in funds. I know that the Board of Education, School Administration, they have incurred significant uh expenses. As it relates to the schools, both from a, yes, facility improvement to, you know, even operations. And Steve, if you could, if you could just summarize that quickly for the council, uh, because that's a, you know, that could have had a significant impact on the town as well. If not for, you know, some of these relief funds that you're, you know, the Board of Education is relieving, receiving as well.
Absolutely. And I'll go quickly and I won't go through all the details. But you know, initially, there was a survey that went out to superintendents, basically asking what, you know, they expected expenses to be for operating schools and keeping them open this year. That came out late last spring. And you know, we filled it out thinking it was just kind of gathering some information. And then we were told that um, that was what we were being awarded our, our funding based on. And it was such a wide disparity and discrepancy between what towns were getting across the state. That there was a lot of outcry from yours truly and also uh, business manager Sam was very vocal. And, and as were a lot of people, you know, feeling that it wasn't being fairly um, you know, distributed. And there was a, there was quite a bit of discussion in, in about it and how to, how to rectify. And then, you know, eventually what ended up happening was uh, we were, so initially we were given $235,000 of a coronavirus relief. Which was about $640,000 less than we were hoping for. And when, you know, Sam, our business manager, who's on the call as well, and he can add what I forgot. Uh, when he went back and forth with the state, they basically said, submit everything that you would want or that you need in order to cover your expenses. And then if any monies, you know, returned, because the money has to be expended by December 30th for this particular grant. Um, if any money can't be expended by other towns who might have, you know, been a little more ambitious than what they had asked for, than what they actually needed. Then they would be, you know, redistributing. So, long story short, um, we ended up getting everything that we asked for in the end. We're getting $875,000 instead of 235. Um, you know, I want to thank Sam. He was very, he was, you know, he was very active with the, with the, you know, Department of Ed in the state. And uh, I was, I was active with the superintendent groups as well and, you know, working with that any avenue we could. And now I'm very, I feel fortunate that they, that the, that they listened and they did their best to, you know, to um, give us the funding we need. So between that and then the, you know, the ESER funds that we can spend until, I think it's September of 2022, before that has to all be expended. Which is about 300, I believe our share of that, 361,000 is 329. Some of that goes to Wheeler Clinic. But um, you know, so there's, there's a good amount of money that, that we will definitely use and we needed. So we were going to be basically asking town council, you know, how, how we can work together to get out of this hole. Because we needed, you know, between staffing and PPE and safety measures and all the things that we spent money on. Additional staff, uh, you know, substitutes when we have someone out, you know, long-term subs for all COVID-related things. Um, additional support staff, uh, technology, you know, to keep kids in school. That's what those monies are particularly, particularly uh to be used for. Uh, we've done a really good job with that in Plainville. So, you know, I feel like, I, I feel like the state listened and we're being rewarded for doing a good job of keeping our kids in school, learning in school as much as possible and safely. So um, that's my report, Robert. Does that cover kind of what, what you were looking for? Is there any more detail I can give you?
Well, ask the council members if you have any questions regarding uh that. Uh, both, both on the municipal side or the Board of Ed side.
Steve, this is Kathy. So the 875,000, um, when does it have to be expended by? Is there a timeframe within which you have to uh show that it's expended?
Yeah, that grant was submitted a few times and revised and resubmitted, but it has to be spent by December 30th. And we have, we have 90 days, you know, once, you know, Sam, you could probably explain the 90 days better. But it has to basically be all, you know, all the expenses have to be accounted for and paid for, or in the process of being paid for uh within 90 days of December 30th. But there can't be any, anything new. And those are all funds that were not budgeted for in our, in our operating or capital budgets from, from, for the current year. So that it's all expenses that were incurred due to coronavirus and uh our, our needs to keep the building, buildings, our five schools. And uh, and you know, our school spaces open safely. So that, that's an important distinction. And there are things that, you know, that are unfavorable in our, in our trending, you know, just keeping an eye on the budget as, you know, Sam does a really good job helping me to do so. And, you know, we've lost $60,000 in food service, um, you know, money so far in the first few months of school. And that's trending downward sharply, which is really good because of some creative marketing. But um, and I can, there's a story behind all of this. But um, special ed costs without placements, you know, are unfavorable. I have 142,000 so far this year. So there are expenses as well that can't be covered by that grant. So, you know, but there are also some potential savings as we had some last year that we're keeping a close eye on. Um, due to the different, you know, differences with athletics and other transportation and some things that, you know. So there's, there's kind of a, there's a lot of dynamics going on right now and it's too early to project where we're going to end up. But, you know, it's, it's a much better picture thanks to CRF um funds that we're going to get uh on the school side and also the town side, of course. That'll be very helpful, so. We're grateful. Thanks, Representative Pettit. You did a nice job making that happen.
You know, as town and school staff, we, we knew that we were going to incur significant operating expenses above and beyond what we had budgeted. In order to address, you know, the pandemic COVID-19 situation. Early on, the state and the federal government led us to believe that, you know, we would receive reimbursement for these funds. Or for these expenditures, on a, you know, unanticipated expenditures. And we rode a little bit of a roller coaster over the last several months with uh FEMA pulling back. And, and not including some items that we thought would be eligible early on. You know, the state telling us that there wasn't enough money to go around. Uh, but, you know, uh, and, and it was a strong possibility, we would have to come back to the council and say, hey, you know. You know, we're in a hole because of this by, you know, a significant amount of dollars. But there was still, you know, an opportunity, you know, we felt it was, you know. You know, the, the final decision hadn't been made and, and uh, you know, based upon what happens, what has happened over the last month or so. Uh, we've covered a good portion of our unanticipated costs as it relates, as it relates to the pandemic. And we hope that we can continue that going forward. You will see that the federal government, with their relief package that they're talking about voting on before midnight this evening. Uh, is providing at least in this round, no aid to states uh for, for, you know, continuing costs associated with the pandemic. Uh, you know, this could lead for the state to begin to cut back on, on, you know, what they can do if they don't get some, some, some help from the federal government. So uh, you know, so, so that may still go, be going forward. That could impact us going down the road. But uh, but I know that there's, you know, efforts being made to try to fund the state. And the, and the, you know, some of the cities and towns for, for some of these costs, some of these costs. And, you know, so more, more to come, at least on that subject. There's no questions, further questions on that issue. I was going to move on to the personal property audit update. Uh, the fiscal year 20 budget included a line item of $15,000 to perform personal property audits. To randomly chosen manufacturing companies in Plainville. The assessor recently completed 13 audits, which increased taxable assessments by $10,341,270. The audited businesses were notified of the proposed changes. And were given the opportunity to meet with the auditing firm to answer questions and to provide additional information. To make sure the proposed adjustments were in line with state statutes. These additional personal property assessments will result in $505,753.53 in tax, in additional tax revenues for the current fiscal year. The tax bills related to the personal property audits will be mailed before January 1st. And businesses can choose to have 90 days to pay them without delinquent interest charges being assessed. There's no questions with regards to that. Next item I have is the Christmas tree disposal. Residents may bring their Christmas tree to the transfer station on Granger Lane for free disposal beginning on Monday, December 28th. If the tree is transported in a bag, the bag must be removed before it is deposited in the appropriate location at the transfer station. And that, people can, can drop the trees off pretty much 24/7 because the drop-off location is right outside the fence at the transfer station. The roadways department will be conducting curb side collection of Christmas trees during the week beginning January 11th. For the tree to be collected, residents must place it at the curb by Sunday, January 10th. They're only going to make one trip through town, so we're asking everybody to put their trees out by Sunday, January 10th, if you want them collected by the town for free. Residents are reminded to be sure not to block sidewalks or walkways when placing their tree for collection by the town. And we'll give a, a uh, an update on that, or at least another reminder of that at the January 4th town council meeting. Next item I have is the COVID-19 update. Dr. Pettit spoke a little bit about that earlier, but positivity rates continue to increase in Plainville and the surrounding towns. The daily state positivity rate now stands at 6.85%. During the last two weeks, Plainville has an average daily rate of new cases, of new cases, but of 64.4 per 100,000 population. And that's how they, they do those uh comparisons is per 100,000 population. There are only two towns in Connecticut that are currently not under the red alert stash uh status. Governor Lamont recently issued executive order 9R. This order allows for municipal tax payments due on January 1st to have a 90-day grace period before delinquent interest is imposed. And we talked about this at the last town council meeting. And this is the same program that was taken with the July tax bills. Residents who wish to have an additional 60 days to pay their January 1st tax bill. Will be required to fill out a municipal tax referral form by February 1st. I know we spoke earlier about January 1st, but we, we got some direction earlier today from the governor's office. Resident, uh, residents will have until February 1st to fill out the form. This form is available, currently available on the town website at www.plainvillect.com. Residents who participated in the earlier program will be notified by email of the new program. We have their email addresses because that's part of the, uh, on the, on the form. There will also be notices posted on social media and press releases will be issued as well. The State Health Department also announced that they are recommending that the quarantine period for those who have come in close contact with infected individuals and showing no symptoms will be reduced from 14 days to 10 days. And I know that that's been uh discussed and reported in the news, in the, in the state newspapers as well. There's no questions on any of those items. I'd like to go to the financial dashboard. I asked Kevin if you could put the financial dashboard up on the screen. We start with expenditures. The total town budget expenditures to date is 45.26%, a little bit over $28 million. Our two-year average is 44.05%, so we're pretty much in line with the two-year average. The general government budget is a little bit ahead of that, having spent uh 53.5% when the average is somewhere around 50%. And we've reported on this uh over the last several months that the reason, the major reason for that is because we paid some of our health insurance costs uh in advance upfront to the state. The Board of Education budget expenditures stand at 40.3% or a little bit over $15.7 million. Their two-year average is 40.45%, so they're running, you know, pretty much in line with uh, with the two-year average. And, and as reported by Steve LaPage earlier in the meeting, he spoke about some of the costs that are coming in over budget. Especially as it relates to outplacements of special ed, but he's also reported that there's some savings in other line items as well. Police overtime is running uh at least under our two-year average by about $32,000. We spent 46.5% of the police overtime budget, so we're uh, 50% would be, you know, the month of the, you know, at the end of month of December. I think we're, we'll probably run a little bit over, you know, based upon where we're at right now, we're going to run over our uh, the amount we budgeted for. But perhaps not as significantly as in past years. Roadways OT is uh, you know, in line with what we've reported in previous months. Buildings to ground OT as well. Uh, roadway snow overtime, we're starting to incur some snow overtime. This is just through the month of November. On our municipal solid waste disposal, we are uh, we're 320 tons above of what we had with our two-year averages. And that represents about $21,000. So we continue to see relatively high uh tonnages of trash that's being disposed of. On the recycling side, uh while we've seen an increase in recycling as well in comparison to last year. Because the tip fee for recycling is significantly below, at least at this point in time than what we have budgeted. We see uh, you know, we see a savings, uh, you know, our expenditures to date are, are below. Um, you know, we, we think we're going to commit under budget if that trend continues. Is there any questions with regards to the expenditures? If not, I'll move on to the revenues. For all revenues, the budgeted revenues that we have for the town. We've received a little bit over 52% of our total revenues. The two-year average is right around 50%. At least that's through the end of November. So currently we're running a little bit ahead of revenues in comparison to previous fiscal years. On our current taxes, which is certainly an indication of the economy to us, to a, to a degree. Our current taxes, we receive almost 59% of our current taxes through the end of November. And our two-year average is, is somewhere around, um, you know, about a half a percent, a little, about 58.25%. So, um, so we're running pretty much in line with our two-year average on current taxes as well. With regards to our fund balance, the, the audit uh for, for fiscal year 20 is pretty much finalized. We expect to have that in your hands somewhere around the beginning of the new year. Uh, there were some adjustments that were made to the audit, which, which lowered our fund balance as of, as of uh June 30th. June 30th of 20 to $10,350,000. That represents 16.76%. If you take into account what was appropriated to fund this year uh in the general fund and, and capital improvements. Uh, that would, we're projecting that our fund balance at the end of this year, and we, it is early in the year, a little bit over $9 million, which represents 14.52%. We do know that we're running ahead in, in revenues as far as uh building permits are concerned. As we reported at a, at a previous meeting, we expect to run over, uh, you know, have uh revenues exceeding our budget in, in, in the, on the uh. In the building permit fees, probably somewhere in the $400,000 range, perhaps as high as $500,000. And as you heard earlier on the uh, on the personal property audits, that could bring in another uh $500,000 in additional revenues as well. Although uh, the businesses do have the opportunity to appeal their, their, um, their assess, their, their additional assessments if they choose to do so. Uh, we don't think that'll have a significant impact on what's collected, but that's still something that would uh, that could potentially lower the, the amount of revenue that's received as a result of the personal property audits. But those are certainly two revenue light items that are, that are moving in a, in a positive direction. And you could see, based on all our revenues, we are running a little, you know, pretty much in line with what we had budgeted. Is there any questions with regards to revenues? Is there any questions with regards to revenues? If not, the next item I have is some of our special funds. Uh recreation, you know, we, we continue to uh run way below on our expenditures because of the, you know, we're, we're not able to offer the programs. And subsequently, we're running behind on the revenues as well. Uh we're not quite sure where we'll end up. A lot will depend on what happens as we get into the springtime. Robertson Airport expenditures, change this up a little bit just to uh. Be a little bit more accurate with regards to our operating expenses, which are very minimal as compared to our capital and other expenses, which now total. Sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars approximately. Our, our Robertson Airport fund balance still stands at a little bit over five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. We did talk about the Robertson, the improvements to the Robertson Airport. Administration building and the roof replacement of hangar four. Uh we expect those expenditures to happen as we get into the uh new calendar year. With regards to the water pollution control uh budget, we're running a, a little bit behind. Uh uh on our percent spent on the water pollution control facility, uh this uh. The amount that they spend, they owe us a quarterly payment for some of the uh, uh services that we provide them. Uh and so that, we do have to make a quarterly payment from the water pollution control budget to the town budget. So that's why the water pollution control without expenditures are showing, you know, a relatively low. Uh percentage in compared to previous years. That's why we, we put that in yellow at forty-two point eight-six percent when the two-year average is fifty-four point five-one percent. They're running pretty much at budget. They just, we just need to make a transfer from the. Uh quarterly payment from the water pollution control budget to the uh town budget. And on the revenue side, now that we've received the bulk of our user charges through the, in month of November, we're showing that the. Uh the amount of uh we've collected ninety-seven point nine percent of what we projected we would receive in the budget. Our two-year average is, is right around ninety-seven point nine percent as well, so that's pretty much in line with our, um with our projections. The Plainville Library. Our expenditures are running a little bit below uh our two-year average in our revenues are pretty much in line with the two-year average as well. Uh is there any questions with regards to the special funds? If not, we have the major projects budget. Not surprisingly, the major projects are, you know, pretty quiet during the uh, during the winter season. We've only seen uh. Some uh money spent twenty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars on the phosphorus removal project. We're, you know, we're almost done with that project. We're almost done with the uh Wheeler School project as well. Uh the parking lot project is pretty much complete and uh, you know, we're, you know, road bond. Two, and we have some money left in road bond one. We expect that that will pick up in the springtime. So is there any questions with regards to the, the major projects report? If not, I would point out again that this was and is posted on the town website. And now, uh I'd like to turn over the um, the, the next report on happenings to Matt Dasko and then when he's completed. We certainly are available for any questions or comments you may have for us. Matt?
Good evening. Uh relatively light evening for happenings. Uh town offices will be closing at eleven-thirty on Thursday, December twenty-fourth and closed Friday, December twenty-fifth uh for the holidays. Additionally, the following week, we have the New Year's holiday and again, it will be a Thursday, eleven-thirty closing and Friday closed. Uh trash and recycling uh collections for Friday will be collected the following Saturday. There are online services available for those that need them. A senior center, a number of, uh it remains open by appointment. Um there is remote and online programming available. COVID testing continues. The next testing is Tuesday, January twelfth. I was asked to note that uh appointments are not required for this drive-through as previous had required. Uh there's also a drive-through Christmas Carol uh special event on Tuesday, December twenty-second at two. And they're starting a new caring and connecting program, looking to try and reach out to seniors. Uh those are the ones that I have for this evening. Uh if anyone has any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them.
Thanks, Matt. Um does anybody have any questions or comments regarding Robert's report or Matt's happening report tonight? Okay, thank you both very much for your reports. Lots of information there. We appreciate your time putting it together.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll move that, we'll move on. Um we do not have any old business, so that brings us down to our new business section of the meeting. We have a couple of items for approval. Um can I have a motion for item number one, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion, motion to appropriate four hundred and ninety thousand dollars from General Fund Unassigned Fund Balance. Account zero one zero zero, 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 zero dash three two one one zero dash zero, 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 zero to General Fund Transfer Out. Town Capital Fund Account Number oh one hundred, eight forty-five, five, 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 one, one dash zero, 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 zero.
Uh Chair Dave Underwood second Sam motion.
Hey, thank you. I have a motion in a second. Does anybody have any comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute necessary documents. And complete the certification process to receive funding to the municipal coronavirus relief fund program for the July first. To December thirtieth, twenty twenty claim period.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, item number three, please.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
Great, I have motion in two seconds. Uh any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, um moving on, item number twelve, other discussions of interest. Robert, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I have a couple of items. They'll be brief. The joint meeting with the Board of Education to talk about the upcoming fiscal year twenty-two budget. Uh is scheduled for Tuesday, January nineteenth at six P M before the town council meeting that evening. We don't think that'll last, you know, much, you know, more than an hour. Both uh Steve LaPage and I will put together. You know, uh how, how we stand in the current fiscal year, which, you know, you're up to speed on a lot of that already. And then, you know, what we know as far as next year is concerned, and that meeting will be taped for rebroadcast as well. So if you could mark, mark your calendars for the nineteenth, I know that's on your calendars for, for a council meeting. We're going to try to uh, uh you know, put together a, a, you know, a one-hour discussion on the upcoming budget for. Um for fiscal year twenty-two with a joint meeting with the Board of Education. Um I will point out that LaRaro will be presenting their review and evaluation of the two proposals. Received on the White Oak Property at the next town council meeting to be held on January fourth. So just, you know, that'll be a uh, they'll do a presentation and, and ask questions, you get, and, and answer questions and. Uh you know, with regards to that project, uh so uh something to look forward to. A decision on whether the town council should continue having remote meetings during the month of January. We're proposing that that be made next week after reviewing some of the COVID nineteen trends in Connecticut. Um you know, so uh, we're still have a high positivity rate. As you heard from Dr. Pettit earlier, there, you know, we did see a little bit of a decrease in, in uh. In, in some of the statistics, we don't know, you know, if that's going to carry through going forward. You know, we're still, you know. Still not, still not where we, we, we want to be or should be, so. And the last item I have is earlier today, the town council was sent a memo from Bloom Shapiro regarding the fiscal year twenty town audit. Just something that you're completing right now. This memo detailed the responsibilities by both the auditors and the town as it relates to the audit. Uh one of the requirements of the audit is to document that the town council has been advised of the notifications in the memo. If there are no questions, uh the minutes of this meeting where we collect that you have been advised of the memo and its contents. This is something that we probably should have done earlier in the year, uh but it is pretty standard language. You've, you know, we, you know, as far as going who's responsible for what is, as far as the audit is concerned. You know, uh but we do need to document that it's been presented to the council. And if there's no objections, we would just note that in the minutes for this evening's meeting. Other than that, I have no other items to have interest in discussing.
Okay, Robert, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh before we close, I would like to offer my um. Greetings for the holiday season. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. I hope everybody stays well. We won't be um meeting until the next year, so to that, I'd also wish everybody a happy new year and let's hope. Next year is far better than this past year is ending, so happy new year and happy holidays to everybody.
Same to everybody else.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Christmas, everybody, happy holidays.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yep, great. Um okay, we do not have an executive session, so our next item is, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, happy holidays. Stay well, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you all, too.
Good night.
Bye.